I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that your cell phones are turned off on the vibrate position. Also, please be advised that our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel and WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair will call on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the role of call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for today, the blessings of life. We thank you for past few days and having the opportunity to celebrate Christmas, the birth of your Son Jesus, and spending time with our families and friends. And God, now as we stand here today to begin a new year, not only across this globe, but in this city, we pray for wisdom and knowledge for this council, for the mayor and his administration. And God, that you will give us the attitude of what can we do to make life better for others, instead of what can we do for ourselves? God, we just pray that we will show the love that you have shown to us through our actions. We promise to give you the praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting that was held December the 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion to approve minutes carries.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of December the 14th through the 20th and 21st through the 27th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Unfinished business. An ordinance amending City Code Section 8693, and this is regarding assessment of nuisance abatement costs. And this ordinance was passed December the 18th for first reading. The change would give the enforcing officials discretion on whether to assess costs on state-owned property and would exempt property of the Gaston Land Bank Authority from assessment. What is the pleasure of a council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I would like to go back on this one and ask the, I'm not throwing it, but the attorney, some people may not understand the assessment, but the attorney would just explain what we're doing here in this particular ordinance.
You're assuming that he understands it too.
I wrote it. Typically, when we abate a nuisance, we go through the process of filing a lien on that piece of property to hopefully one day recoup our cost. The process of putting a lien on property, there is a cost to that, namely advertising in the newspaper for the public hearing in order to assess the lien. What's happened, what's been our experience, is a number of these properties are owned by the state of Alabama and have been for failure to pay taxes. And so, we have been putting liens on state property, which we will never get back, and we could probably save about $30,000 a year if we did not go through the process of putting a lien on property we know we won't get a return on. So this will give the building official discretion to avoid the lien process on state-owned property. And of course, also on property which the land bank owns, which is, they've gone through the process to clear title, to sell it, and get it back in service.
Thank you. That wasn't far. Our next resolution is ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 921 Avenue F in District 3. And this is in a state of Lori-Harrell, Cusa Federal Savings and Loan, Laura Jean Burton, Dexter Dwayne Harrell, Vincent O'Neil Harrell, USP Atlanta, Stanley, Jerome Harrell and Dexter Dwayne Harrell and others, and Carol Dexter Harrell, being the last known owners. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on November the 20th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, we, like you said, we tabled it for 30 days to give them a chance to work on the property, and it's no work has been started.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place, as advertised, to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 113 Pine Alley Street in District 1, the state of Alabama, possible right of redemption of Lamar Graves being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in August of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve. And just to give the council a brief history of this property, we provided rehab here about 10 years ago, went through the process, assessed the lien, we sold our interest, recovered all of our money spent in the rehab. Property has since been abandoned, returned to its unnatural state, if you will, and we're asking for a resolution to assess the possibility of providing some additional rehab or removing the property. Thank you.
Brian, is this a rental house now?
It's totally abandoned. The gentleman who bought our interest in it, actually, a previous owner went and redeemed their interest in the property, and so there was a battle in the court system, which we were not actually a part of. And for whatever reason, the property has just been abandoned. And as you can tell, going in the rear of the house, been individuals that have removed any and everything of value. So it's, at this point, I would say it's unlikely that we're going to invest any more money.
Thank you.
Can it fall in the hands of the Gaston Land Bank Authority? I mean, is it possible to acquire this?
Right now, the property is actually assessed to a private individual, and my understanding is the land bank would only be an option after five years.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Let me say this. You know, we try to help people, and you know, a lot of people just say we knock houses down and be knocking them down, but we give them chance after chance. And sometimes, I'm speaking for myself, I fight more than I guess I should, because I have a little more compassion. And then, the people don't hold up their end of the bargain. So I just want to let people know that we do try to work with people, but if you're not going to hold up your bargain, a lot of them tell me, you know, I don't even why you gave them 30 days, because they're not going to do anything. Well, after you've been around here a while, you see that that's the case 99% of the time. That's all.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance, oh, I'm sorry. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1706 Hook Lake Road in District 3. And this is Troy L. and wife Barbara Tosh Bright, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in April of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking for
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Make a motion to abate.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1515 Malone Street in District 3, in the state of Alabama, possibly of redemption of Judge Peggan and Mabel Hartwick, subject to that certain mortgage in favor of A1 Trans, HTG, and AC Incorporated, and Brian Perez, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed our case in August of this year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President, I have one. Mr. Harbison, I noticed a picture of a truck on the property in the picture, so was that part of the abate? We haul that off?
Are you interested in the truck? We can make you a deal. Yes, we will pull any and all vehicles associated with that property. Yes.
I think that's the first vehicle that I've noticed, that I've seen maybe in the pictures. I was assuming we did, but that's just another pleasure of the city to go to the expense to haul that off.
With a resolution, that is correct. Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Councilman Back, if I may, we have a contract with Harry Wrecker Service that does all of our city stuff, wrecker services and stuff, and they will be the one getting that, and they will tow it to their lot. And if nobody claims it in a certain amount of days, they will take possession of it.
Okay. Thank you. It's good to know.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance. Did we get a vote on it?
No, I'm sorry, we didn't vote.
We did not.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 425 North Ninth Street in District 3. And this is the state of Alabama, and possible right of redemption of Tanya F. Porter, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this is one of those cases that dates back to 2015. We've worked with previous and current owners to no avail. Been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a
Mr. Harbison, just for the general public's knowledge, are you at liberty to discuss what caused this to be a protracted issue with this piece of property? Why it took so long?
Well, you know, I think when the property was sold initially, there was some good ideas. It's a couple of large structures, as you can tell in the picture, and I think they were looking to possibly convert the property into some rental units, and it has just dragged out now, and like I said, to no avail, so.
You had at least one change of ownership?
I'm sorry?
You had at least one change of ownership?
At least once, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Madam President, I asked that question just so the general public can understand why, because there's always a perception that we kind of pick and choose those that we're allowed to take sometime, but that's not the case. There's something that happened that caused the delay.
And I'm sort of familiar with, I'm very surprised because the young man who acquired the property, I was under the impression from him, myself, that he was going to, you know, rehab the place, because it's a building that has been in that area for a very, very, very long time. But I was surprised to see that nothing had been done.
I know he's working on the other property right now, so I don't, you know, I really don't know.
Well, I understand. Well, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'm going to have to go ahead on and say abate the nuisance.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is 13 and 14, and our next public hearing is ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 44 and 46 South Side Avenue. And this is in District 4, Ellie Jane Keeling Smith, Joseph A. Smith, and Frances S. Mill, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves a couple of family-owned properties on the same parcel. They have tried for years to market and sell the property, have been unsuccessful. I have been in contact with the daughter of the current owner, who is handling his affairs, and she has asked that the city abate the nuisance and then give them an opportunity to make the payments. We started our process in July. There have been no improvements, obviously no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to allow us to abate the nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1807 Adams Street, and this is in District 5, state of Alabama, and possible rights of redemption of Malaya Cook and Micah Cook, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed our case in July. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1023 Pine Street in District 5, state of Alabama, right of redemption of Anissa R. Hicks, Carol Jack Floyd, or hers, subject to a mortgage in favor of Jane V. Floyd, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in May. The structure actually burned in August. There have been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Are there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 21 Summerworth Avenue in District 6. This is Susie E. Guthrich, being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak, who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, I got a bunch of phone calls this morning, this piece of property, this lady's not able to be with us today, but her administrator, I think it was, came and talked with me. I got a bunch of calls this morning. There's somebody that's trying to buy this piece of property, you know, so I'd like to give them 30 days for a kid, please.
Second.
No.
No.
Does anyone speak in favor of this resolution?
Madam President, we started this case in April. I'm certainly not opposed to a new owner coming in and doing something with the house. Most likely, we would perform and will, at a later date, some rehab on this if we're given the opportunity. Has been a new roof installed. I would ask that the current owner, or any potential new owner, as soon as possible, clean up that backyard. As you can tell, it looks like everything in the house was moved to the rear yard. So I would ask for a resolution to abate. Councilman Cannon has asked to be tabled. That's fine, I'm just asking the backyard to be cleaned up right now.
I will start working on it today, Mr. Harbison. When I get home, I will call the people, and she's kind of sickly too, but I'll see if I can get somebody to get that stuff out of the backyard while this is going on. Thank you for the recommendation of.
So what is the pleasure of the council?
Ask for a 30-day table.
Aye.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our final public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 3501 William Avenue in District 7, FNANPLLC, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves trash and debris, abandoned vehicles, vehicle parks. We've actually had five cases in the past three years. We've been to court unsuccessfully, as you can see in the pictures, in getting the property cleaned up. There have been no improvements since our case started. And this particular case started in January of this year, I'm sorry, of last year. So we're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
This is some unusual circumstances behind this right here. The man's wife just had a baby, and she had a hard time, and this stuff was moved from some more places here.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I would ask for a 30-day table, at least people to get cleaned up, plus get some legality straightened out on the property.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
This is a resolution appointing election officers, and this appoints poll workers for the referendum election on January the 22nd. It's also authorized the use of 20 DS 200 voting machines. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution authorize agreement with Tar Power System Incorporated, and this was for an extended warranty and preventive maintenance agreement for the generator located at the venue at Cusa Landing, and the cost is $6,850. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is an ordinance for first reading, and this is authorizing conveyance of certain properties located at 911 Benson Avenue in District 2. And this property was conveyed to the city in lieu of nuisance abatement proceeding. Mike Dawson has offered to purchase it for $250. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it on next week. Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. Okay. It's a request from the clerk's office. It's a resolution authorizing agreement to purchase property from the Alabama Great Southern Railroad Company. May I ask for unanimous consent to bring it up today?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We need to do discussion, but I would ask to come up and explain it a little bit, so the people know what we're doing.
I'm assuming I'm on already. Yes, sir, we've been working on this Rails to Trails project actually two and a half, three years, something like that. This starts in West Gadsden at Cabot Avenue and extends two and a half miles or so westward behind, across this 12th Street, there behind the old Agrocola Shopping Center, and continues west over to near Cash Saver and Third Street there where it terminates. This actually provides some immediate benefit in the form of a new pedestrian bridge over Black Creek adjacent to Tuscaloosa Avenue there at the Rescue Squad, and so we'll be able to convert that, like I said, to a pedestrian bridge that can be used in conjunction with the Black Creek Trails, and ultimately, the entire trail system could basically connect the Black Creek Trail with the riverfront. So it's a good addition for us. It won't be done tomorrow, but we have this opportunity to. This opportunity to acquire the property and hold it until we can proceed with the project. I would say that ADECA has been very forthcoming with the possibility of grant money to do the actual trail construction, so let's hope that we're able to benefit from that, and that's probably anywhere from fifty-fifty money to eighty-twenty money. So it'd be a very, very nice addition for our trail system.
And in addition to that, which was a good suggestion from Councilman Wilson, since President Buster is here, but it's something for the zoning commission to look at as far as the zoning around that area, to make sure that if there's future businesses or something, that they wouldn't run into any type of opposition. And we just suggest that to anybody. If you're going to open a business or do something, check on the zoning laws before you just jump and start doing something, and that would alleviate some problems. So that's a consideration that we need to sort of look at, since that's going to be a business district, maybe.
Madam President, if I may... Shane, I... You know, I just think about projects like the Beltway Project in Atlanta that were very similar, Rails to Trails projects, that grew much larger than that and actually became a thoroughfare for commerce throughout that city. And, I mean, now you've got literally sections of the Beltway that go through businesses, literally walk right... They go right through the middle of the retail space. So, I mean, if we're planning for the future, I just... If we're going to use this as a tool, not only as an alternate form of transportation, but potentially an economic development tool, I think it'd be good for us to proactively, maybe at the very least, identify a couple of points at the beginning, at the end, that might need some rezoning, you know, just so we don't get in that situation where we're...
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Madam President, I do have one item that I'd like to ask for consideration today. It's a... It's a resolution regarding a one-year moratorium on certain new business licenses. Again, I'd like to ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Are there any more new business?
Madam President, I have actually two that are both requested by the library. If we could possibly combine those. First is a resolution authorizing acceptance of a thousand-dollar donation from the Gadsden Rainbow City Coin Club, and the second one would be number seven oh eight, an ordinance amending budget for donation from the Gadsden Rainbow City Coin Club in the amount of one thousand dollars. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration of both.
I'd like to move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, Mrs. President, I have two, please. I have an ordinance and a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for. It's requested by the library. The ordinance is amending budget for supplemental state aid check for the APLS in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, and the other one's acceptance of a supplementary state aid from the State Public Library Service.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution and the ordinance today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration of both.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution and the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both items.
Are there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. It's a resolution seven one oh. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Winai Work for Enterprise Scheduling Website Services.
Second.
I'm going to ask for unanimous consent.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Department reports, committee reports, boards. Remarks by the mayor and councilman. Mayor, you having a remark?
I just hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We got projects going, the rain is delaying us, but South Eleventh Street, that's still an ongoing project. Also, the park down here, Miranda Park, and some things over across the way, close to the venue. And then the... Another one is the rec center in East Gadsden, so they'll be, as soon as the weather cooperates, pretty soon we'll have some big things happening here. I think everybody will enjoy it.
Councilman Reed.
Thank you, Madam President. Do want to echo the mayor's sentiment. Do want to wish everyone a... Hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season and was able to usher in the new year safely and peacefully, so we are excited going forward about some things that are in the hopper for the city, and one of the things that I'll highlight is we're... Many of the council members are now meeting with the engineering department to talk about paving projects. So... So the targeting and the timeline as it relates to that is to get all of those preliminary items out of the way so that we'll be prepared to take advantage of the better weather in the late spring and early summer months. So if you have some concerns about specific street paving issues or what have you, make sure that you raise those with your elected officials so that they can be accounted for. That's it.
Councilman Worthing.
I just want to reiterate what the last two said about, hope you had a Merry Christmas and a Happy and Safe New Year. And this year, let's strive to work together in unity, and let's try to do a little bit more cooperating and fussing. Thank you.
Councilman Beck.
Just to echo the sentiments, hope... Excuse me, hope everybody did have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Looking forward to working with this council and the mayor and his office and the citizens not only of District Four, but of all the districts in making Gadsden all it can be for 2019 and beyond. I think we're off to a great start. There's a lot of good things going, as the mayor has pointed out, and I think we're going to see a lot more positive things come from his office and from this council. I'm just proud to be a part of it. I look forward to riding District Four with Heath here in about a week to look at the roads. It'll be my first time to do that. Usually when I look at a road, I just look at a road, and now I'm looking at it with a different set of goggles, and I'm going to lean on Heath to help me make wise decisions to use that paving money as to the best of my ability, and so just that and many other things. I look forward to learning as 2019 takes its own course, so thank you all very much.
Councilman Wilson.
I just want to say thank you for everybody who participated in the Feed the Need program over the holiday. That was another tremendous success. That's six years in a row. I believe we handed out four hundred meals this year. That was up fifty more from last year, so we'll continue to try and grow and build that. So many members of this community who come together to make that a success. So having said that, I look forward to working with all the members of this council and the mayor's office to make 2019 a great year and to meet the highest expectations of our citizens.
Inside joke, we just had a united meeting over here, so I'll go back to Councilman Beck.
Speaking of working together, these two guys are covering me today, and I really appreciate councilmen's helping me here. I'd like to recognize my wife, who is sitting in the back of the council chambers. She teaches kindergarten in our city school system, and she can't come to these meetings because they're when she has about eighteen five-year-olds. I don't think we want those eighteen five-year-olds in the council chambers, so I appreciate Kim.
Yeah, that'd bring the total number to twenty-five, right?
Yes, be a plus. I appreciate all of Kim's support and glad she can be here today. Thank you.
Ms. Beck, I do appreciate you teaching my daughters how to read, and I learned a lot from you teaching them how to read, so I do appreciate that.
Councilman Cannon, and he has two minutes.
It's a new year, and you can't limit councilperson's what to say, but I'll try to say mine short because I'm going to...
I'm going to give him some of my time today, too.
I'm going to have to yield some of my time in a minute to Councilman Wilson, but I'm going to say that Councilman Worthing, Councilman Reed, and myself went to Breakaway Ministries during the Christmas season. It's just unreal what Eddie Nichols has did down there without any help from the city money. He's got donations to put a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar roof on that building. He's put eighty-five thousand dollars worth of flooring in there. It didn't cost him anything from donations. Air conditioning system and all that was new, and it's just... He's going to open up in February, and I hope there's some way, Councilman Worthing, that we can get him on the community development funds, because if you'll go in and see that building and see the people that he helped this Christmas, I think there was at least sixty kids that got Christmas, you know, on account of that down there this time. It was real good, and they fed everybody, and they had this Christmas story, and it was just a real good thing down there. Mayor, you forgot one thing when you was talking about excitement. I'm excited about the new police precinct, the Charlie Station, and the library coming over to Alabama City. I am tickled to death, and that should be coming hopefully next month or so. It should be finished, I'm thinking. And I want to yield a little of my time to Councilman Wilson. He's talked to a few of us about artificial turf and grass and stuff, and I'd like for him to kind of fill us in how that was in Atlanta when he was there, if you would, please.
So he has one minute.
Okay, I'll be brief.
I mean, this is supposed to be a cost-saving measure for us.
One of the biggest challenges we face as a city council and as a public works department is obviously the continuous and ongoing maintenance and upkeep on lawns, abated properties, medians, rights of way that may not necessarily even belong to the city of Gadsden, but if we want it to look nice in our community, we're going to be the ones that have to mow it. So there's a lot of progressive communities out there that are turning to artificial turf. There's been some... And I'm not talking about Houston Astrodome AstroTurf. There's been a lot of advancements in artificial turf out there, so I think it is valuable. I've seen it applied. There's certainly a ton of data out there about how municipalities have used this to lower their labor costs and their burdens on their public works departments and provide creative solutions. So I've been doing some research on that, and I look forward to working with everyone else on the public works committee, Councilman Reed, Councilman Cannon, to try... And the mayor's office to try to put together a plan to see if maybe that could be a solution that could save this city some resources and put our critical manpower that we do have in the right direction, so thank you.
Do you have any idea what the cost of it...
There's...
By square foot?
Obviously, the square footage, it's a square footage multiplier, so one thing that would probably be helpful is to be able to work with the public works department and the building department, maybe, to try to get some sort of ballpark estimate of the total amount of square footage out there that we think we could... That this could potentially be a good solution for, but it works out to something around anywhere from a dollar to two dollars a square foot. Obviously, if you're coming at it from a municipality with large buying power, I would imagine you could negotiate that price per square foot down considerably. But again, this product has theoretically a twenty-five-year warranted life on it, so it could be a long-term solution to a problem that doesn't appear to be getting any better anytime soon.
Thank you.
Councilman Reed.
You know, new ideas are always good, and I'm not belittling that. I appreciate the input. I was sitting here thinking that we moved to Orlando, Florida, a few years back, stayed down there five years, but I lived at the store till a man didn't like to cut his grass, so he concreted and painted it green.
Yeah.
So that's an alternative. You just cut it, you dye the concrete. I know everybody.
I think that costs a little more.
I think the life of concrete's more than that.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm supposed to, and I'm truly honored to do this, with Buster Porch, discarded American flags. If you have any of those, you don't know what to do with them, don't throw them in the garbage, please. We have to honor our flag. Either bring them to me or take them to the Patriots' office in the amphitheater. There's a box outside, and put them in there, and then we'll handle them honorably, okay? And the rumor that Barbara and I were going to get divorced is not true. I spent five, six days in cabin fever with my wife, and she lived through it. I swear I don't know how. I thought we were going to kill each other after about three days, but I hope everybody else had a happy holiday and enjoyed themselves. I really did. Thank you.
You know I tell everything I know someone I see.
Please don't, if it's on me, don't tell.
I would just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and yes, we are... We've always worked together, and we're going to continue to work together in harmony and in love. And also, District One and District Four will be having a district meeting the fourth Monday in January, but we're going to meet, and this will be a one-time only, at the venue. It'll be five-thirty, and you'll hear more about that, and we'll probably even get flyers out, but I'll... We'd like for those in District... He has an area that's close to District One, District Two, and so we just decided to have... And if District Two wants to come in, they can, but this is an opportunity for those in the district that have not been able to go to the venue to go and view it, and then also have a district meeting. I think Public Works may be there. I'm quite sure the city engineer, we have requested to be there. So just look to hear more about District Meeting One, District Meeting Four, at the venue, January the twenty-eighth of this month. Is there anything else to come before us? I'll ask for adjournment.
Second.
We adjourn.